The Monday, February 25th, 2025 at 6:00 PM Municipal Building 150 East Monroe Street, Withville, Virginia, the Withville Town Council meeting. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Holly Atkins.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, next is approval of the agenda. Need a motion as presented or somehow amended?
Madam Mayor, at this time, I would like to amend the agenda pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to litigation, and also Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A3, discussion regarding the possible acquisition of real property for a public purpose.
So I have a motion. agenda due, do I have a second?
A move, Madam Mayor.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none? This is going to be a roll call vote, and I'll start with Councilman Hand.
Mr. Joseph Hand, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Just for information's sake, we do have information there, time in there for recess if necessary. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which exists of the minutes of the town council work session, February 4th, 2025, and the minutes of the regular meeting of February 10th, 2025. I need a motion. Sorry. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, any opposed? None, that motion passes. Next on the agenda this evening is a presentation of a resolution to Ms. Kendra Nguyen. And town council needs an adoption of the resolution recognizing Kendra Nguyen. Hold on before I present it to you. I need a motion.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Right here, none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, so I will now have this presentation. All right. Congratulations. Hold up, she's going to take one of her boxes.
Very good.
Thank you all. All right, so next on the agenda is citizens' period. We have one person that has signed up to speak, and that would be Mary Castle. Ms. Castle, when you come up, if you state your name and your address for the minutes, please, and just kind of speak into the mic, and we have a long five minutes and more if you need it.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mary Castle, and I live at 130 Heritage Lane, Withville, Virginia. And I am here tonight to speak on behalf of Withville About Face, which is our business located at 145 Tasbl Street. My daughter and I have owned this business now for seven years, and the entire time we have been in Old Stage Mall. And we've never really had any issues with the public at all until recently. About the last five or six months, we've had a lot of issues with parking, smoking, trash, pot paraphernalia. And this really needs to be addressed, and I'm concerned as the weather starts getting warmer, we get a lot of foot traffic from the hotels and stuff. And just walking over here today, there's a carton of cigarettes that's been smashed on the street there in front of our business with, and cigarettes everywhere. We also have a little bit of theft taking place, which, I mean, we don't really know who's doing that, you know? I know, like, Priscilla leaves out things, water bottles for dogs and things like that, you know, that a lot of the kind of stuff like that's starting to disappear. And so we've started analyzing, we've been complaining, I've spoken with local authorities, and we've been taking pictures three times a day of the parking. And I didn't think about this, Ron, right, I had you hook me up, but instead I killed a couple of trees today.
And is the same day, Nichols, every day, all day? Case it's not an issue like Mondays, but Priscilla, I mean, that's being bad at our business, that is, that testing? Five minutes?
Burger Haven employees park along that street all day, and they access the business through the alley beside of our store. And, I mean, I understand that as far as an employee goes, but they come out to, down the alley for their breaks, they sit in their vehicle, they smoke, they play music, they throw their trash out. I've spoken to some of these individuals myself, and, you know, and they've been, they've said, well, the police doesn't monitor it, or we've been told we can park here as long as we want because this is not monitored anymore. I have been told that. There's been a few that have been respectful and moved, but, you know, they're just really not respecting our town or any of the parking signs. There's 30-minute signs there, and there are people parked there, the same vehicles all day, every day. And this is definitely having a negative impact on Tasbl Street. Now, I've spoken with several of the other business owners, they would be more than happy to come. And I'm not sure what it would take to get the attention that this needs to be addressed immediately, because it's just going to continue as the weather warms up to create an additional issue. You know, people will not stop if parking is stressful, time-consuming, or there's a group gathered, smoking, or whatever, they will not stop for nonessential items like our boutique items and flowers and wine, they just will not park there. You know, if there, if it looks like it's an uncomfortable situation, or if there's no parking at all, and that is what's happening on Tasbl Street right now. And so I know there's a long-term parking management situation there, but at the same time, something needs to be done now to head this off. Either talk with the business owners, the vehicle owners, I mean, we've been taking pictures, like I said, three times a day, there's tag numbers there, there's evidence of the same people all the time. I just feel like this needs to be addressed if you want the small businesses to succeed in that area.
Ask you a question. But I do know, Ms. Castle, you reached out to me, and I know that I've emailed some and I know that we've talked about this, I believe, meeting before last, and I think they were supposed to have a meeting on Thursday, that following Thursday, I think.
Now, yeah, I've met with the downtown committee, I've met with the police chief, you know, I mean, I'm going to continue to dog this because it is negatively affecting us. And we have had a lot of complaints, and I've, we've gotten to where we've just been telling our customers, we just need you to call the town and complain, we don't know what else to tell you.
We do have a meeting scheduled to discuss this on Thursday with the police department and town staff and downtown Withville. So that, that meeting is about to occur, and we will see what things we can do. Now, for them to have told you that they've never been told that, we, we have talked to downtown Withville, and they theoretically have talked to those people about that already, and told them it's not an open parking space.
Right. And, you know, I'm sure some of those are just the employees that want to do whatever, because, I mean, that's, like I said, that's the issue with them coming out and wanting to take a quick break in their vehicle, smoke whatever, eat whatever, but, I mean, now we have a lot of trash on the street. And you all were so kind last year to get us an extra trash can, which I appreciated that, and that has helped us so much, but this group doesn't use a trash can.
I was thinking, were we supposed to have the meeting like the last, the last week, or was it supposed to be for this week?
It's scheduled for this, Thursday of this week.
Okay, okay. And I, I think if I'm not mistaken, I think downtown Withville, and I think even Lieutenant Bard mentioned before that they went around to each business and said, you know, even though the two-hour parking, to have the owners, from my understanding, that, that's happened before even this occurred, from my understanding, they went to each business. We might ask them to do that again.
Well, I mean, as you can see, as of yesterday and today, the business owner's one of them that parks there a lot, all day, every day. So, you know, either go around and park in front of your own business, and, or...
I believe the solution is going to have to be some parking enforcement.
Yeah, I think so, but, and, you know, we'll, we're, I mean, we, I'm born and raised in Withville, I love Withville, I'll do whatever, I'll serve on a committee, I'll help volunteer some time if something needs to be reviewed or investigated, you know, I want to see us all do well.
Mr. Moore, is the alley that they're allowed to park in?
Well, I think it's a private, it is a private alley, I think Chief Hatch may have addressed that at a previous meeting.
Yes, I looked the information up for him, and Sarah Terry is the landlord, and she owns that full alley, I verified that on her deed, because she was telling me that she thought Richard Formato had owned part of it, and I said, no, ma'am, you do. I mean, if you look at her deed, she's the one that owns it.
We could also ask her, and I think he was looking into that about, make it no trespassing, those who did. We certainly could look into that also. But we're going to discuss these on Thursday, these items on Thursday, and hopefully we'll have a solution for you.
Okay, and like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll be happy to help or contribute to something or have some signs posted, you know, whatever you feel like we can do to help with it as well, but, I mean, I have actually gone out and spoken to people as they've gotten out of their vehicle. As you know, I'm, I'm not one, I know I've mentioned to Holly two or three times, she's like, well, just crop your name and your picture, I'm like, I own my complaints, I'm not like that, I'm going to talk to people.
Before I send them in, I always crop them if I don't have a chance to ask.
Right.
And I try, I try to be respectful and people.
Yeah.
And that's why I did it.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, no, I mean, I don't mind that people know that it's coming from us, because, I mean, that's, it's definitely, you know, going to have an impact on us, and a lot of the other businesses, which you all might have already heard from some of the other business owners, because I know there are several that are not happy.
We did hear from Ms. Seacrest at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So are there any other questions for me? Or, like I said, I'm happy to volunteer if it ends out coming down to you need some volunteer hours to look into some things, or please feel free to reach out.
That offer, we'll let them have their meeting and see what they can pull together.
Well...
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary. And great work on this, by the way, I may hire you somewhere along the way.
Well, it was fast.
No, I think it's great, thank you.
Nobody else sound up for citizens' period, so we'll proceed with the presentation of, to town council, presentation by Representative De Robinson, Farmer &amp; Cox Associate PLC, regarding the 2023-2024 audit for the town of Withville. And I believe that is you, young man.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, it's good to be with you all. It's been a number of years since I was here to present, but it's good to be back, thank you for having me. My name is Gordon Jones, and up until this past year, I was the partner in charge of the audit. I stepped back, and now I'm a director or audit manager, or whatever, however you want to give me there. But basically, I'm the audit manager in charge of the town's audit. I've been working on it quite, quite a number of years, I started working for Robbins, Farmer, Cox in 2019, 99. Yeah, and have been working on the audit ever since, with Corbin and Deanna mostly, and then by myself, more recent years. You should have a copy of the financial statements, I'm not going to, I'm not use those, I'm going to use my presentation, which hopefully I can get this thing to work. Is, are there pages prior to this? Okay. Can we go, can we go back? Yeah, perfect. Maybe I just figured it out. Oops, too far. Sorry about this. Did I miss it?
B8, 10.
Okay, great. Yeah, now I got to hang it, sorry about that. This first page here, page two, references the audits, the reports that we issue as part of your financial statements. There are three reports this year, this, these reports that are included in your financial statements, and I've referenced the pages there, if you want to look at those at a later time, but there are three reports that we issue as part of your financial statements. The first one's the Independent Auditor's Report. It's an unmodified or clean report, the highest level of assurance you can receive for an audit. It basically says that we believe your financial statements are materially correct, I mean, that's what all this is all about. No new Gatsby pronouncements, thank goodness. Not sure if I can get this to go down, can you scan down for me just a little bit? Thank you. The second report is on page, or begins on page 100. We are required to look at your internal control and compliance. It's a clean report, no material compliance matters noted, and no internal control deficiencies noted. So that's a clean report as well. On page 102, we have our uniform guidance report. This is required when you expend funds in excess of $750,000, it's a single audit, some people refer to as a single audit report. This year, you had some loans from USDA that required us to do a single audit, and that's why we have to present this report here. For the town of Withville, that can vary from year to year depending on what federal funds you all receive. This year, it's mostly because of a grant to community facilities, loans and grants from USDA. Any questions about those three reports? Basically, all three clean reports, no issues noted there. Really can't do a whole lot better than that. This next page is our communication to those charged with governance. We are required to have a communication with town council, we do that at the beginning of the audit, we do that through the engagement letter, if you remember seeing that back in May, June, maybe. And we also have this communication at the end of the audit. It's a summary of the audit process, nothing negative noted here. It, it tells you things like what estimates are used in the financial statements, if you could scan down, that'd be perfect. That we've requested representations from management. If we had material adjustments, we would note those here. It's a clean report, no, no issues noted there. We, we do have one management comment. And what is a management comment? It's just a recommendation that we don't feel rises to the level of having to put, put it in a report, but that it's important enough that we make management aware of it. The urban highway maintenance is part of the APA's specifications for audits of counties, cities, and towns, which applies to the town of Withville, since you all have population in excess of 3,500. So we have to follow those guidelines when we do your audit. That's part of that compliance that I noted on the internal control and compliance report previously. Currently, it's hard to do what the APA, the state is requesting us to do based on what is provided to us. So we've got a comment here about room for improvement related to urban highway maintenance and the reporting of those expenditures. Any questions about that before I move on?
It's been a question for a long time, hasn't it?
It has been a question.
Been an issue as long as I've been on council.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
True. It, it requires a lot of time, so it, I guess in the town's defense, it would require them to hire, probably hire one person that keeps up with these expenditures full-time. But with that said, it is a requirement, not really anything I can do about that. And basically what, and if I can explain it just real, real quickly, you all have street maintenance that are posted to Public Works. The state requires you to keep up with that and prove that the expenditures that you're getting back from the state are being used on street eligibility, eligible expenditures, whether it's staffing, accounts payable, et cetera. Because, you know, what, and what they're getting at is to make sure that you didn't hire Gordon to be in streets, but actually I'm working over it, working for finance or something. So they're just, they're just trying to make sure that what you all were requesting funds back from the state are being used appropriately. That's the whole point of this. And I, like you've said, I've reported this for a number of years, and, you know, they keep sending money, so I don't know if that's a good reason not to do it, but anyway, I would work on trying to improve this. Of course, I wouldn't put it in a letter if we didn't think that was the case. Any questions about that? Okay. Moving on.
I could, I've got it.
If you have any questions, just email me, I think my email address is on the front of here. Yeah, you can email me or call me if you're confused about what, what we're trying to say there. Okay. I never know how long to speak, so if I speak too long, just tell me to wrap it up. It's been a while since I presented, so I like, decent presentation, might be worthy. Talk briefly about the numbers in the financial statements, if you could scan down just a little bit. The, the town's books, the governmental funds are kept on two different bases of accounting, there's full accrual, which is at the top of this spreadsheet, it's in the blue. And I'm going to focus in on the net position was right there, which shows 35 million, right at $35.9 million in net position. And that, that's a full accrual, long-term perspective, includes all your assets and all of your debt. So it includes a lot of different debts, and I'll talk about debt here in a little bit. But you can see from this, over the past five years, this is five years of data, you started with unrestricted net position of 7.1, now you've got 18.3. So that can mostly be explained by the fact that you received ARPA funds in fiscal year '22. Revenue replacement was used for that, so basically you were able to basically hold on to that money without really spending it. Does that make sense? And, and that was what they allowed you to do if you were under $10 million, you're allowed to use revenue replacement and use your current expenditures, so it just increased your fund balance. Down below that, you have a more short-term, let's scan down just a little bit, this is governmental funds, it's a modified accrual basis of accounting over short-term perspective, doesn't include long-term assets or long-term liabilities. If you look at your fund balances, you have about $25.38 million in fund balance, and you can see again in fiscal year '22, the one in the center there, fund balance went from 13.3 up to 22 million, and again, a lot of that was due to those ARPA funds. The town has committed funds of $14.2 million and unassigned fund balance of about $11 million, which is adequate amount of fund balance. People often ask us what's, what's a safe amount, what do we recommend? We usually recommend about 15 to, about 20 to 25 percent, the town currently has 117 percent. So that's a, that's a lot of fund balance. Next schedule, any questions about that? I know it's confusing, the governmental accounting is, has not, they have not made it easy over the past 20 years. Recording it under two different bases of accounting really confuses, it's hard enough to get people who aren't in this stuff every day to understand one basis of accounting, much less two. But anyway, that's what they've provided. This is a summary of the general fund, and I'll speed it up here a little bit. This gives you five years of data, those numbers in green show you the annual growth rate, revenues over that time period increasing at about 10 and a half percent, total expenditures a little bit further down shows an increase of about 88.4 percent. So revenues are increasing higher than expenditures, it's always a good thing. Come down just a little bit further. Fund balance increased during fiscal year '24 from to 2,152,000, started with 22.6, ended up with $24.7 million in fund balance. Started with 22.6, ended up with $24.7 million in fund balance in the general fund, this is just a general fund. Cash balance as of June 30th was about $24.5 million. And again, that's that calculation, people ask us what's a safe amount. Typically, it's based on your operating expenditures, your operating expenditures is about 21.6 million fund balance. As a percentage of that is about 114%. So that's plenty of fund balance. Come on down, please, I can, yes, I can. These are just some graphs, I know y'all wanted me to stick to the point, so these next few pages are just graphs. I'm just going to load on through this, okay. I think that the debt side of it's probably more important. The town's debt, got five years of data there, total long-term in the general funds, about 16.1 million. A lot of that, long-term interest-bearing debt is that general obligation, about $8.1 million. There are some leases related to Gatsby '87, Gatsby '96, Gatsby stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. That's who tells us how to report all of this stuff. You've got estimates of 655,000, which is a landfill liability. Net OPEB related to Gatsby, 75, $3.4 million, net pension liability of $2.5 million, compensated absences of $1.3 million. So in the general fund, you have about $16.1 million. A lot of those are made up, those estimates, non-interest-bearing debts, long-term obligations that I told you about earlier, talking about some of those estimates. The water and sewer fund has about $11.5 million of debt. Interest-bearing debt's about $9.3, $9.4 million. If you look at your total debt for the town, $27.6 million. Population of 8265, so your debt per capita is about $3,300. The APA puts out a comparative cost report that'll tell you what the state averages are. And you can see the past four years, of course, we don't have the current year, the state averages is about 2,275. So the town's debt, while it's a little high based on debt per capita compared to everybody else, is relatively high, but you have plenty of fund balance to offset that, so not a concern. You had a lot of debt, you didn't have fund balance, that would be a concern.
How much was it per citizen?
33. 33, 38, is my estimate. And last year, the state average, if you look at all the other towns that have to report those 3,500 population people, towns, about 2,300, 2,275. And your debt service is below 5% this year, so that's good, has been for the past couple of years. So low debt service. Some of those long-term liabilities, though, really are kind of beyond your, well, not really beyond your control, but they're estimates, they're not interest-bearing debt, so I'd keep that in mind. All right, last thing, and I'll be quiet. Yeah, thank you. Governmental Accounting Standards Board just tells us how to put this stuff together. Kind of like FASB or the private industry, you all have Gatsby. And from year to year, they issue new standards. Luckily, this year, fiscal year '24, we didn't have any, thank goodness. Next year, we do have one that's coming up, compensated absences. They're going to change the way compensated absences are measured. Compensated absences are, if I have sick leave or vacation leave as of June 30th, then you all owe me some money as an employee. So that's what compensated absences are. And you can find that number in your financial statements, but that's effective for this year, fiscal year '25, the one we're trying to finish up here. And there's some other ones that are coming down, there's another one that's effective, the next one that's listed there. 102, it's effective for this year, but I don't think it has a large impact on the town. And then there's a couple other, if you're really desperate for something to read. This stuff will put you to sleep, that's for sure. All right, I'm sure I went too long, but if there are any questions, I'll try to answer your questions.
Any really red flags that we need to immediately address?
Out of my opinion. The uniform highway maintenance stuff is probably the, I wouldn't call it a red flag, but something that needs to be addressed. It's not, it's not an easy thing to correct.
How do other towns address this, or do they have that problem?
Well, the one that comes to mind is Covington. I do their audit, and they have a lady that works in the maintenance department, and that's what she does every day. Accumulates that data so that she can put that report together and send it to the Weldon Cooper Center. That's the whole point of that, is to put the Weldon Cooper Center report together and send it about this time each year. And then from that, the state looks at it and says, well, did they use all the money we sent them for state maintenance or not? And if you didn't, then they might request you to carry some of the money over or give a reason as to why you didn't spend it all.
I'm sorry, you said, are they working the maintenance department?
Mm-hmm.
The lady?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know exactly which department.
Public Works Department, I believe.
Yeah, it'd be a Public Works Department.
They have to collect the data every single day?
Every single day. And if a crew goes out to work on Maple Street or Main Street and whatever other streets you all have here, then they have to document what they did that day. And then that information goes into this report that goes to the state. It is time-consuming.
Fact that we haven't done it ever, it sounds like. So is there, at some point, we're just going to get hit pretty hard, or?
Well, I'm waiting on them to say something. I don't know how else to put it. I've been reporting it for a long, a decent amount of time, and no one ever says anything, so. Usually, it takes something to say again.
What will be our penalties if we?
I don't, I don't know that it would go to that. I think they would probably just put pressure on you to correct the things that we're noting.
Every time?
I really don't have an explanation for it. I've even reported it in the report. And nothing, so I don't, I don't know. I don't have an explanation for it. As to why they haven't asked, why aren't you doing this? Or why do they keep having this binding? Why do they keep having a management comment?
Is Covington the only locale do you know that's doing that?
No, I say I used to audit, well, I audit City of Bristol, and they have, they do the same thing. They've got a person that does nothing but put that information together. I'm sure they do other things as well.
Before I left here, I think there was a person that was doing just that, trying to track all the places. Even read it went to each site daily, but I don't know that it was a perfect record, but.
That's correct. Yeah, there have been some improvements over the past three or four years. But just not the point that I can say that I'm able to do what the APA is asking me to do. Thank you very much.
You sign that? Thank you, Mr.?
You're welcome.
Safe travels. I said, safe travels.
Thank you.
You're welcome to say. All right, next on our agenda is a presentation of ordinance number 1444 and ordinance amending and reenacting ordinance number 028, generally known as Personnel Rules, Regulations, and Policies of the Town of Withfield, Virginia, as to amend section 4A of employees to add section 4, Part 1A, salary increases for appointed employees, i.e. town manager, town attorney, town clerk, and town treasurer. Or do you have anything?
I don't have much to add to all that, except that, as you see before you, the, what this does is change that to all salary increase forms and are brought to you or approved by you all and has your signature, basically, with that. That would propose in the future for those, for those listed employees. Everybody understand that?
Yes, sir, I do.
I think it's pretty.
Questions, concerns, or any other, on the council?
I just want to make sure, I know before we had a signature forms, and I don't think the last one that was done was done clearly for all of council. And I just want to, because I just want to make sure that there's correct verbiage in there that we don't need to tweak it anymore, so that way we're all clear on the same page. Because from my understanding, and from some, from my understanding and others, I think, understanding, there was supposed to be a review prior, review of an evaluation prior to a raise that was just sort of getting across the board, from my understanding, that was mentioned, employee as well. Want to make sure that it's correct.
Well, this personnel change requires your approval and your signature for any, for the, for any salary. I don't see how the situation you're concerned about could happen with you. One, because it requires your written, be a violation of personnel policy of council. If it happens, that will be very, just defines it well, in my opinion. Make sure that that lays it out, the policy is very clear, in my opinion. All signatures, all accounts, any increases or changes in salary on or listed positions.
I just want to make sure that that's clear, because it, the last incident, there were things that were added to that, and it didn't read specifically as it was given to me. So there were things that were added to that form that was not discussed.
Again, I do think this resolves that.
To make it clear, yes.
I think this resolves, because it requires you both to vote and then to sign on the approval form for the increase. So there's two checks and balances, one is a publicly recorded vote in an open meeting. Going to be for everyone to hear and see, and was recorded. The second thing, as you saw, it says the necessary salary increase forms have to be signed by all town councils. I think, I think that those two members discuss with you, it resolves.
No areas where fine print can be added?
Well, it'll be.
Am I correct on that?
I mean, I mean, I can't, I. All I could say to you is that all salary increases you're going to have to sign off on. And I'll be happy to review this as long as I'm here to make sure there isn't any for you. Hey, the way this policy is set up is for full transparency, one, a vote of council, and two, then you're all signed off on it before it's actually implemented. But I don't know of a better way to do it.
Right. Our understanding. From this way, from this point on, I will be making sure I read every single inch. I will not, I will not let that happen again.
Well, and to be honest with you, I believe we all signed it, but to our understanding, there was going to be a review before the raise went into effect. So I appreciate you working on this, Mr.?
Well, and, and under this policy, there, if you're signing it, the raise is going into effect. Okay, just remember that, under this policy, you have to sign the form that requires them. So if you think that some condition precedent has something that should have happened, hasn't happened, don't sign the form.
Well, and that's, that's what we were led to believe, that there would be a review, and I think there was discussion that there would be a review before a raise went into effect.
Right, and I just, I understand where you're at.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Would it, I just have a question to kind of follow up on what you were saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be prudent for council to see the document that is going to be used in that place? Where the other document had a little place that got checked, I understand. But are we using a different document, correct?
Maybe with every, every, every step of a raise, maybe something should be signed before, because how that one was done is I did sign the amount that I approved, and I did not sign where the raise, where it was written. But again, here to my understanding, it was supposed to be a review before a raise went into effect. And that, that was just, that was my understanding, and I believe on some others that it was, you know, and they, they were even talked to about it, so it should not have went to effect.
You are correct, council member.
Well, this new ordinance, 1444, will correct that.
I ask a question of Mr. Castle. If three of the five members sign this and vote on this, is that still an effective document?
Well, so.
Is that the way you read that?
So the way this personnel policy works now is the vote approves it, but it requires everyone to sign it before it goes into effect. Now, that will require council to recognize, obviously, that the majority vote rules, but they're all going to have to sign that it's happening under this personnel policy. And if that doesn't work, and they won't sign it, then we'll have to address it in an open meeting. But it won't go into effect, it can't go into effect without all council persons signing it, even those that voted against the raise. If theoretically, let's assume there was a, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Moore, assume there was a vote of three to two for a raise, three in favor, two against, those two against still have to sign the form for the raise under this personnel policy. That's to ensure that all councils are aware that an appointed official is receiving it.
And, but all council, they, they were, it was told that there would be a review beforehand, but.
Well, and I'm, I understand, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm talking about going forward.
Going forward, and I appreciate you, I appreciate you doing this going forward, too. Thank you.
Well, I had some dialogue with Jerry earlier about the way that document is going to be, you know, put together and to maybe try to answer some of those questions of we all putting our signature on there, but it doesn't say who did what and who, you know, what we voted on, what we did. And so maybe if council feels going forward with that, that, you know, down there where we sign, you know, it doesn't say yay or nay or nothing, but I'm sure they could put in a little box that we could check that said yes or no. I don't know if that's helpful.
Just do a whole nother form.
I would rather do a whole, a whole new form, because that other form was very, it, the other form just needs to be done away with.
These boxes were just, that I'm talking about, and it may not be helpful, but at least if somebody picks it up, they'll say, oh, well, Mayor Taylor didn't vote a no, you know? And, you know, people going, you know, if you want to find out, you said, well, I did this, I put it right here now, so why, why is there any question? And I voted yes or no, what, I don't know, just something to think about.
That's good, that's.
I believe, though, that Mr. Castle has pointed out that the vote of council is the approval, but everyone has to sign off on that approval. And so I don't think there's any need for a yes or no vote on the form itself, it's already been done, and maybe that form ought to delineate the action of council.
I think.
And, and then have the.
I think the form should delineate that pursuant to, to delineate from the minutes pursuant to whatever vote there was, the town, I'll use myself, the town attorney is receiving a raise from blank to blank on this date, then, and then have the vote of council on that, and then have a signature line where everybody understands that, or the pay request form that's going to, is it accounting?
With the last instance, we were all on board with the review.
I know, I understand, I'm just trying to.
We need to do away with the old form, and like you said, have each council member sign, there would no boxes, yes or no, but just sign, and then that way, if someone has, if they're in disagreement, they have an area where they can list, don't agree with this, or whatever, but we've got to do this a better way, because I'm just.
The point I'm trying to make is the discussion that happened at the council meeting should be the record of that vote, or that action. for that it action. So if you have an objection, you can voice it at that time and vote no, vote no. And that, that will be recorded in the minutes of the council.
Well, that's how it was. We did in, in the beginning. That was the understanding and that's how it was read.
Were there?
And then it didn't turn out that way. So we'll just, um, but anyway.
I'm just making sure we all understand what the.
And we're talking about a situation that happened. I think we can all agree with someone that's no longer in the room. So with, with regard to how that all took place. And so I think we've got a great process to fix it. And I, I'll work with Ms. Corbin and Mr. Moore to come up with a really good forum for you on that too. I think it's a good idea to have a nice forum. So I'll work with Ms. Corbin.
Thank you.
Other dialogue on that? Need consideration by town council to adopt ordinance number one four four fourth on first and final reading. Motion? Have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and second is further discussion. Right, this is a roll call vote. We'll start with, uh, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins.
Taylor, aye.
Addison, aye.
Joseph Hand, aye.
Well, next on the agenda is, uh, presentation of ordinance number one four four six and ordinance amending and reenacting chapter fourteen taxation, article two, property taxes, section fourteen dash seventeen, unpaid taxes and assessments of the code of the town of Withfield, Virginia on first reading. Have anything to?
Well, I think it, it's pretty self-explanatory there and it's before you, but it basically is extending the due date for taxes or changing the due date until March the fifth, which will go into effect on the twenty-sixth. I believe you have already, uh, postponed the present tax due date until March here. So this will just do it in future years forward.
Questions? Consideration by town council to adopt, adopt ordinance number fourteen forty-six on first and final reading. I need a motion.
Pass the move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Right here, none. Again, it'll be a roll call vote. We'll start with, uh, Councilman Hand.
Joseph Hand, aye.
Addison, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Next on the agenda is consideration of a resolution supporting the hazard mitigation grant applications. Ms. Holton, do you have anything to share with us?
I do not have any. So I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody have any questions? So consideration by town council to adopt a resolution supporting the hazard mitigation grant applications. Is a motion and a roll call vote. Motion, please?
Send me.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. Again, this is a roll call vote. And we'll start with Vice Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Joseph Hand, aye.
Passes. Next on the agenda is review of career development plans for the fire, uh, and rescue department and the police department. Holton, do you have anything to add?
One thing, if I may, um, each of you, the career development plans for both the fire and the police departments. I think they're pretty well ready to go. If we could consider one minor edit to the department. You don't have to look it up. I can explain what it is. Um, so at the last meeting, we decided that, um, we would make annual allocations as part of our budget each year, whether we wanted to do the career development plans. And I would just suggest that the payout for the employees occur in the same fiscal year that you are, that they're in the program. Um, so I would just ask that instead of the payout for the police department being in July, that you consider that being in June. So that that would be within the same fiscal year that the monies are appropriated. If you all are okay with that suggestion, I believe otherwise the plans are, are ready to be approved, if that's your desire.
So do we need two separate motions? One to amend that to June instead of July? Or do we just go ahead and do the one motion for, to accept their plan?
I think your motion can include the one suggested edit by staff regarding the payout date. If that's okay with you.
Questions? Consideration by town council to adopt the career development plan for the fire and rescue department and the police department. I need a motion.
Send me.
Motion. Um, and that includes what we just talked about.
Correct.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it since he did the motion. We both said it at the same time, so.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Or none? Roll call vote. Start with, uh, Councilman Hand.
Joseph Hand, aye.
Addison, aye.
Aye. Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Any more? Next on the agenda is, uh, discussion regarding a possible salary increase for the mayor, vice mayor and town council members.
Council members, if I could briefly address this for you.
Right, thank you.
I have discussed with you how setting of town council salaries works. Since at least two, well, since a law that happened in nineteen seventy-five and then since at least two thousand and one, town council members are authorized to set their own town council salaries. And that can include uh, compensation with such benefits as are provided other town employees. So that was, that's been in effect since at least two thousand and one. Uh, a prior council of, a prior Withfield Town Council on March eleventh of twenty nineteen passed a resolution authorizing each of you to be eligible for and to receive health insurance benefits on the same as provided the employees of them. Um, that resolution was passed. Ms. Corbin located that for you and provided it to them. July first of twenty twenty-four, a new law, uh, came into play, uh, addressing health insurance specifically, which is one of the regular benefits that are provided employees of them. That law says that any locality may allow participation in its group health, group health insurance program by any non-benefited employee, including members of governing bodies. If such non-benefited employee or a governing body member is not otherwise entitled to participate, provided that such non-benefited employee reimbursed the locality for the full cost of their participation. For purposes of this subsection, reimbursement may include foregoing all or part of a local government's salary. Right? So the, the way the law works is you, you are authorized to set yourself as a town council. You have to. There's no, who else can set? Um, you are allowed to provide health insurance benefits. And a prior council here did that and allowed each of you to have health insurance benefits at the same rates as provided by employees. But this law that went into effect on July first of twenty twenty-four now says that the way that we have to, um, that, that you have to reimburse for that, but it can be uh, come, come out of the salary, right? It can be as all or part, foregoing all or part of a local government's salary. So because of all that, I recommend it to you that your local government salaries reflect the cost of any of the health insurance. Um, if you want to provide the same benefits as have been provided since the resolution that was passed on March eleventh of twenty nineteen. Have I explained all that enough to everyone? I just wanted to explain all that. So what it is, is, um, it's a differences, in my view, it's a difference with regard to how we're accounting for things because your health insurance has to be included in your salary. And then it can come out of it. Everybody on board? And that's why I read the exact law to you that changed on July first of twenty. Right?
Madam Mayor, it said, I move to authorize town staff to prepare in ordinance with the following salary amounts. Mayor, annual salary, sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Vice Mayor, annual salary, sixteen thousand three hundred dollars. Council members, annual salary, fifteen thousand dollars. This ordinance will be considered at a later meeting during which a public hearing is set for March tenth, twenty twenty-five.
So we have a motion on the table? Have a second for what she? Have a motion and a second. Dialogue, questions, concerns, buddy? Saying?
And all this motion is doing is allowing the preparation ordinance and you're going to listen to public comment, decide what you want to do for.
Castle, can I ask you one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that law, uh, I just want to make notes in my notebook. Um, does that law like have a name? I know July.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
I didn't cite the code section.
No, no, that's why I just.
That law is, uh, Virginia Code fifteen point two dash one five one seven. Uh, paragraph A, it's the second paragraph of paragraph A that I read to you. And that, now there's a lot more in that law than just that, but that was the.
I'm sure you'll be glad.
Sure. And anyone that needs a copy of that, I can.
Right. Any more questions for? Will be a, uh, a roll call vote. Motion in a second. No further discussion. Roll call vote. We're going to start with, uh, Vice Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Joseph Hand, aye.
That will come back to us.
On the chance.
March.
That date again, for the public hearing was March the twenty-fourth, no, March the tenth. I'm sorry. Today is the.
Right. Go straight on that. Right. Next, um, on the agenda is, uh, upcoming meeting reports by town clerk, Sheriff Corbin, please.
Have just a few. Of the Joint Industrial Development Authority of Withfield County will meet on Thursday, February twenty-seventh at three P M here in the council chambers. A special closed meeting of the town council will be held on Thursday, February twenty-seventh at five P M at the Withfield Meeting Center. And the last one is an ex-regular scheduled meeting of the Withfield Town Council will be held on Monday, March tenth at six P M here in the council.
Thank you. Under other business, um, next would be council member time. Start with Mr. Hand.
I do not have anything this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I don't, I don't have anything at this moment.
And I also will pass.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, I wanted to, well, I was going to bring up the parking on, uh, Towel Street. Um, Mary wasn't sure if she was going to be able to come, Ms. Castle. Also, um, I know we had talked before about the sidewalk there at Peppa's Ferry Road. I know, I think that's in, in works. Um, I did have someone ask me about looking at maybe putting a sidewalk, uh, behind Hardee's. There's a lot of, I guess, traffic. Um, like, I guess, uh, walking traffic about in that area. Um, directly behind the Ford Place. I think there's just a little section there between that and then going down to Main. If maybe we can try to look and see and maybe put that on somewhere down the road. Thank you. And I think
my concerns have been emailed and are being taken care of.
Way to get done. Right. Anything else, um, for council? If not, uh, council feels it's ne- necessary to go into a closed meeting. Um, pursuant to two point two dash three seven one one A one, one regarding the performance of appointed employees. Uh, second would be certification of a closed meeting requires motion. Uh, the other is two point two dash three seven one one A seven one consultation with legal counsel pertaining to litigation. And one more item would be two point two dash three seven one one A three discussion regarding the possible acquisition of real property public purpose. I have a motion to go into the question.
Send me.
Have a second? All in favor? We're now going to close session.
All right.
Town Council is now in open session. A motion is necessary to certify that only matters lawfully convened in the open session were discussed. Any motion?
I mean.
Motion. I need a second.
A second, Madam Mayor.
Motion and second. Is there any for any dialogue? You have none. This is a roll call vote. Vice Mayor?
Johnson a. Atkins a.
Taylor a.
Edison a.
Joseph Hand a.
Good bits. And then we are now in open session.